We need to wait for Teresa or we go?
Oh.
So we're waiting for the whole rest of the commission?
Planning Commission for June twenty-second, two thousand and twenty is now in session. Commissioner Sekan, would you lead the flag salute please?
Three.
Are we live?
Four.
No.
They're not live.
We've got one by Art Cederic, two, three, four.
On the recording. For public participation. We have no, we have public participation.
The only one I see nothing is Commissioner Stone.
He's here?
Commissioner Stone.
All the letters written out to their areas.
Commissioner Sekan, would you lead the flag salute please? Can you hear me?
I can't hear anybody.
Salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic with its hands. One nation, under the law, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I, can you hear them?
Can't hear you.
I can't hear you. Say something Greg. I can't hear you. There you go.
Yeah, I have my microphone turned off. But.
It's a.
If you're wearing masks.
Yeah, I can hear you now.
If you're wearing masks.
Yeah.
You have to speak a lot louder because the mask language is not coming through.
Ramza, can you hear us?
I, I can hear.
No, I'm asking Commissioner Curry, can she hear us?
Yes, I can.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Catano, would you please take roll call?
Hello all?
Hello.
Hello.
Hello. We're gonna take roll call in just a minute.
Uh, Commissioner Curry?
Present through Zoom.
Thank you. Commissioner Fedor?
Yep, I'm here.
Commissioner Garcia?
Here.
That's it. Commissioner Gonzalez?
Here.
Thank you. Commissioner Singh? Not present by phone or video?
Yes, uh, by phone.
Phone, okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Sekan?
Here.
Thank you. Chairman Nuswonder?
Here.
Thank you.
Potential conflicts of interest, any commissioner who has a potential conflict of interest may now identify the item and recuse themselves from discussing and voting on the matter. Uh, since we have no public presence, we're gonna skip the oral communications to the public. Consent calendar. All items listed under consent calendar are considered routine. The complete consent calendar will be enacted by one motion by roll call vote for purposes of discretion. Any commission member may have an item removed from the consent calendar and made part of the regular agenda. The commission can then approve the remainder of the consent calendar. Consideration and necessary action on the minutes of the May twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty meeting. I will entertain a motion to accept them as printed.
I make a motion to accept them as printed, yes.
Commissioner Gonzalez has made the motion. Mr. Catano, would you do the roll call please?
Yes Chairman. Commissioner Curry?
Yes.
Commissioner Fedor?
Yes.
Hello?
Hello.
Okay, Commissioner Garcia?
Yes.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Yes.
Commissioner Singh? Commissioner Singh?
Hello?
Uh, I need, I need your vote sir, Commissioner Singh?
Yes sir, uh, uh, yes.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Sekan?
Yes.
Chairman Nuswonder?
Yes.
Thank you, proceed.
Uh, Mr. Chairman?
Yes sir.
Why don't we, uh, get and go to the, uh, presentation first until we confirm that, uh, people, the public has the access to the public hearing? Because I tried the, uh, the access number on here and it wasn't.
We got a different one.
There, there were two.
Oh. On advice of council, oral communications notices to the public at this time, any member of the public may address the commission regarding any item over which the commission has jurisdiction. No action or discussion will be taken on any item not on the agenda. Issues raised will be referred to the chairperson for review. Members of the public shall limit their remarks to three minutes. Any remarks from the public? Seeing none, we're gonna move on to, uh, item number two. Consideration and necessary action on conditional use permit, number two zero two zero dash one four. Consideration of a resolution recommending that the planning commission approve a conditional use permit to allow the selling of beer and wine, type forty-one alcoholic beverage license for Chicken Shack located at twenty-nine forty McCall Street. That should be McCall Avenue, Suite one one two, Selma, California. And a notice of exemption regarding the same. Does staff have a report?
Yes, I do. Can everyone see it on the screen?
Yes.
Okay, I'm sharing my screen now, so, uh, the item before you is a conditioning use permit. It's two thousand and twenty zero zero one four. The request is for the allowance for the sale of beer and wine at a restaurant. If this is a type forty-one ABC license at twenty-nine forty McCall Avenue, Suite one twelve. The request was made by Sonia Sidhu, and if I'm pronouncing that wrong, I'm sorry. The project site is near the northeast corner of McCall and Floral, where Cypress comes in to McCall. This is an existing shopping center. There are a couple businesses located there already, um, and then the proposal is for a Chicken Shack restaurant. And a restaurant isn't allowed use in the neighborhood commercial zone. Uh, but the request to sell alcohol requires the approval of a conditional use permit. In this case, the code does not have any restrictions or guidelines as far as separation from other alcohol use, uh, alcohol sales or other uses because it's a type forty-one, um, license, which means that it's in conjunction with a restaurant. The project is exempt from CEQA and is consistent with the general plan and zoning of the site. And with that, staff recommends that the planning commission approve conditional use permit two thousand and twenty dash zero zero one four. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Under the, uh, top paragraph here, summary and purpose. The last sentence in that paragraph says because a restaurant is already located on the site, a site plan review is not required. Where is the restaurant that's already on the site?
So, the building is already constructed. So, the building, this shopping center went through site plan review some time ago. So, we look at it as an existing building and so the, the CUP is strictly for a use. It's not for a building, so we didn't review the site because the site.
Have you gone out there and looked at it? Have you driven over there and looked at it?
No, I have not.
It's never been lived in, it's never been used, it's full of construction waste. There's nothing in there that even comes close to being able to be called a restaurant. I went and looked at it Saturday morning on my own.
I would be, I would guess, I'll let the applicant speak to it, but I would guess that they didn't wanna put the improvements into the building, into the suite until they had this approval. But the building itself is existing and we would have no, um.
We know about the building, but the building is not a restaurant yet, it's just an empty building. And the report here says that there is an existing restaurant, there's not.
I'm.
I think they need a site plan review.
So, a restaurant isn't allowed use in this zone, so a restaurant can come in, in that sweet spot, sweet location, uh, without any review from the city? Does, the uses of the suites in the building? I can't, I'm sorry, I can't hear.
This report is misleading. You make it sound like there's already a restaurant there, there's not.
I'm sorry about that.
And it says because the restaurant is already located on the site, they don't need a site plan review. I disagree with that. Because there is no restaurant, it's just a vacant building.
Is Neil on the line by chance? Is Neil on the line?
Michael's in there. I'm, I'm here. Um, the building was constructed, I presume, with a site plan. Um, so I, I would guess what you, we would have to do and what the commission, uh, is probably interested in is to make sure that the uses that were contemplated with that site plan have enough parking and access, um, and answer questions like are they gonna have outdoor dining, um, that kind of thing? Because that's always a question that gets raised when there's a, a liquor license, is whether or not there's gonna be outdoor seating. Uh, and, and with, with this particular application, unfortunately, we're gonna have to continue the public hearing anyway because the access code on the agenda, um, was, it not working or something? Um, so there's the potential that people who wanted to attend this meeting won't be able to. Um, so we're gonna have to continue it anyway. Um, so maybe we can revisit, uh, pull out the old site plan, make sure it's consistent with the restaurant use, um, and maybe get an operational statement or something like that from the restaurant owner. So that the council can, or the, the planning commission can review that operational plan and, um, you know, kind of an as-built to determine things like where the entrances are gonna be, where the exits are gonna be, whether or not there's outdoor seating, um, whether or not there's sight lines to make sure that, uh, no one's underage drinking, that sort of thing. Am I correct?
You're correct. And when that project first came to the planning commission, the main gist of the application was that liquor store. Nothing was ever put in, in, in to play about whatever else would be.
Okay.
Since then, they've moved a laundromat from the old location to part of the new building, but it's still under construction and it's, it's been over six months they've been working at that, so.
Yeah, so at, at the very least, it sounds like we'll need an administrative review of, of how they're gonna develop that use, just to make sure that parking and access and things like that are going to be consistent with the restaurant versus the original site plan, which was at the liquor store.
I will, uh, I think at this point entertain a motion to continue this to a later date. Based, based on receiving a more, uh, in-depth report.
Well, that and because of the number, uh, yeah, I'd make a motion that we, would we continue it?
Continue.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we continue it.
Can I have a second?
All second.
I have a motion and a second. Uh, Mr. Catano, can you do a roll call please?
Yes Chairman. Motion to continue, uh, Commissioner Curry?
Yes.
Commissioner Fedor?
Yes.
Commissioner Garcia?
Yes.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Yes.
Commissioner Singh?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Sekan?
Yes.
Thank you. Chairman Nuswonder?
Yes.
Thank you.
And just, just to clarify, that's gonna be a continuation to the next regular meeting of the commission.
That's correct. Based on a little more in-depth input. Uh, okay, presentation, item number three. Presentation of a next date, an overview of the downtown overlay zone and opportunity to gain the planning commission and community's input on what they would like for this area. The planning commission has to consider a recommendation to update the existing zoning code for the downtown core. This includes a recommendation for a downtown overlay zone to be added to the city's proposed zoning code update under its F B two grant funding. Now, Mr. City Attorney, because we're having issues with the public being able to tune in, should this item be continued also?
I, I would leave that up to the termination of staff, um, and, and how much input they're gonna want from the public. But certainly if, if we don't continue it, we at least bring it back, uh, at a later date so the public can have an opportunity to comment on it. You're not taking any action on it tonight, so.
How about if staff gives us their presentation and then we will, uh, defer a decision until at least our next meeting?
That sounds like a good plan.
Okay. Staff, you have a report on this, uh, overlay?
Um, this is Kira. So Eric with, Eric Von Berg with Rincon will be presenting this item. This is just a, um, I'm sorry. A workshop, so the, the main goal of this is to get the planning commission's input on the ideas that we have thus far. So there, there is no action presented this evening. And I'll turn it over to Eric.
Okay, make it quick, these masks are hot.
Hi. Sure will. Um, good evening, this is Eric Von Berg with Rincon Consultants and, uh, say I, I'm hoping you see my screen. We're working under our Fresno cog contract for, um, circuit planning and engineering program to present, to develop this vision for your downtown. Um, and basically this shows you here kinda what we are planning to do with this downtown, um, Selma zoning, um, overlay district was to create a friendly, vibrant, street designs, um, establish family-friendly entertainment, encourage economic development, and then embrace the community culture of the rising.
Is there a screen you wanted to share Eric?
Oh, you're not seeing it?
No.
I see Hugh Lake.
Oh, okay.
I got a beautiful picture of Hugh Lake.
I thought it was Huntington Lake.
No, it's Hugh. Are you seeing it now?
Yes.
Yes? Yeah. There you go. I had the wrong screen I was sharing. Um, so, kinda what we wanna do with this overlay zone is to provide a consistent vision for the downtown, allow the uses that you want to see in the downtown area and provide building and design guidance for those, for the development that's to, to occur here. So, each of those is sort of how you want this area to develop, what kinda businesses you want in there, what kinda uses and activities that could be there, and then what, what could it look like? Um, in working with staff, we, um, identified these boundaries here. As you can see, the yellow would be our downtown overlay zone. And then the green is sort of a, an additional area that we could do, or we could just do it with, um, with the, um, within the code, not necessarily have to have another boundary, but around High Street and doing some, um, different type of design work or, um, uses for that area along High Street there. Now, this is part of what we want your comments on and input is on the, um, these boundaries here. If you think these are good boundaries for your downtown and for the High Street area, or if you wanna see it expanded, contracted, um, anything, anything of that sort. Um, you know, you don't have to provide that, just today, we're basically at the starting point of this project. Our contract was renewed, renewed with Fresno cog, so we have through the next fiscal year, starting July one, to work on this project. So this is just a close-up of the High Street area that we are looking at. So it's talked about, here's the, sort of the goals that were set out to, um, with this project here, and I'll go through each of these kind of little more detail. Said the economically feasible, community-oriented land use mix, so it's just the idea of what kind of activities and uses would you like to see in this area here, so that we can develop, um, zoning code that will allow for that kinda development to occur, such as, um, discussing the previous item of, you know, outdoor dining areas there, mixed use, which is shown in the bottom picture there. Whether things of having it so that you can have street activities, street fairs, farmers markets, that kinda thing. Mixing in with government services. One of the other goals is this idea of making it a complete street. What that does is if we put policies in there and go and, uh, guidelines for the complete streets, it's a, it'll allow you to then access a additional grant funding that usually comes from Caltrans and Federal Highway Administration. And the picture here going from showing just kind of an idea of what that means of going of, not just having your streets oriented just for the cars to utilize, but also pedestrians, bicycle facilities. Making it, um, show here, these are kinda like called bulbouts, where then it's a safe place for a pedestrian to wait to cross the street and makes it a shorter distance that they have to cross. And then it creates this visual for cars that there's a narrower street and they just naturally will slow down because this, um, street is more narrow. So it's just a.
Have you ever driven in Selma?
What's that?
Have you ever driven in Selma?
Yeah, I have pictures of the ones you have, yeah.
Just because it's a narrow street doesn't mean they're gonna slow down.
When it's wide, they go faster, yeah, it's, there's, there's bad drivers, that's for sure. And that's part of those, purpose of those is to, to make it a little bit safer for the pedestrian.
And as far as the High Street area goes, they're already challenged. The businesses that are there are already challenged for adequate parking.
Yeah, and so that's kinda here and the next thing of step is changing parking requirements, uh, looking at ways to, um, either reduce those requirements so that they can go in there, finding additional parking in those area, you know, in the area for them. These are called parklets, which would be, it would take away parking, but, um, would then widen the, um, usable area within the streets. So you can use those, you know, for outdoor dining, um, recreational areas, um, any other kinda uses. If you wanted something like that, we don't, you know, this is all just ideas that we're providing to you today. But, you know, we could look at finding grants for additional, um, parking there, try to, um, work with the.
Eric.
Shared parking facilities. Did somebody have a question?
Anyone have a question?
So.
Yeah, I do, uh, Craig Garcia, nice to talk to you. Um, yeah, I do, um, we're trying, are you thinking that downtown Selma, is your vision to be a more of a pedestrian area or more of a central business district?
That's up to you guys to decide. Um, I'm just, we were talking with staff and some of the, um, you know, what has occurred in other downtowns. There's a lot of push for more walkability, but, um, that's up to the city of Selma and Planning Commission, City Council to give us direction on how you wanna go there. And then we'll develop those, um, the zoning code to meet those needs.
Okay.
So here's, um, you know, the other goal of trying to, um, what, what is the future for the downtown that you guys wanna see for that? You know, and these are just some examples in other cities of, of unification efforts, um, you know, and ways to enhance those different areas within downtown. It was with those design goals, you know, is it things like, would you want to see more public events within the downtown, such as the farmers markets or, um, developing, you know, um, the, uh, outside dining type of areas there? This is another example that in the middle there of a parklet where it would became like a daycare. Example like you could use it as a daycare facility, so when people come to, to, to shop, they can have their kids in a daycare for, for an hour or so. The idea of creating a, um, a sense of downtown with Selma, you know, you can do that through, through artwork, murals, a couple examples shown here, or signage, as is shown here, so that people understand that they are coming into the downtown area and it gives it more of a sense of place. Another thing to utilize is, um, street signage, where you have a unique design for this downtown area, you know, which is well, then it's what they call wayfinding, which also then helps people direct them to areas they're looking for. And then you, you know, like this is sort of street art plus it's a sitting area. That's, that's there on Fulton Street that was added in. Um, you can have little parks, you know, maybe there's a certain area that you could create for a little park area for people to relax or kids to play, um, just to get people out on the street and enjoying the downtown area. Another thing to think about is the downtown entrance. What do you want, what would look good as the, or where would be the best place for a downtown entrance? Let's say if we did do some type of signage, you say you're entering the downtown. So this is on Second Street, right now we have the boundary at Sylvia on the top, um, but I was just providing these other pictures, so the next street is Witson and then, uh, West Front Street. So looking at, thinking about the, you know, creating this sense of place in a, you know, for the downtown zone. What, what is that intersection that you want to have as the downtown area? Now, this is just coming off of ninety-nine from the west, but you kinda wanna do something similar on probably, you know, any of those ma- main entrances on there. And as well on High Street, you know, like here's the example of the bulbouts in the top left corner, that you guys have done, that narrows the street there, that make it easier to cross. And that also gives a sense of coming into that area there. Like on the bottom here on High Street, um, you know, there could be opportunities there for, um, providing more of a knowledge base that you're coming into the downtown. The upper right corner, you know, the example of maybe trying to increase the density or housing in the downtown, um, you know, where you could put a, you know, maybe these buildings could be retrofitted to allow, um, second-story apartments or something of that sort, and then you create more, more people living in the downtown than the uses, those businesses in the downtown. So those are some other concepts to think about. So here would be our implementation goals, um, you know, trying to create private-public partnerships, have realistic standards and guidance to make it easier for development to occur. Much more straightforward, hopefully. To identify different funding sources such as grant, grant opportunities to do, to work with those private-public partnerships and, um, and try to be consistent with all the city planning and document processes for this downtown area. And the plan of it is to, we would develop this downtown overlay zone and then that would then be carried forth into your, uh, overall redo of your full citywide general, uh, zoning ordinance, so that it would complete the process, so that it would then be in place to be utilized. So with that, I'm happy to answer more questions, um, look forward to working with you guys in the future on this.
Well, we're gonna have to, uh, talk this over as a commission. We're gonna have to talk it over with some of the citizens that rely on information from us. I guess what, what we did was started page one today and we'll move forward with it. I guess what, what we did was started page one today and we'll move forward with it. We have a little rear to deal with this. Somehow it looks fine, somehow it looks like somebody had a nightmare.
Okay. Yeah, so these were just to give you ideas.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I did want to, you know, just engage some discussion. If, if Eric, you could go back to the slide with the downtown, the overall overlay, and then there was a central part. I think this kind of goes to maybe Commissioner Garcia's comment about there's, there's sort of two things we're trying to look at here as we do this. And one, and this is for discussion and feedback, the, yeah, back to the map one. There we go. So the yellow boundary is the large, the whole overlay zone. And then the green is what you, what did you call that kind of a focus area?
Yeah, it'd be, you know, we were calling the High Street area.
Okay.
That there was wanting some different options within High Street compared to the rest of the area.
And, and you can have different requirements for those two different areas within the same overlay?
Yeah, we can either have it as specific, you know, regulations for along High Street. Or we can like say put, you know, have another boundary, you know, like this, so we could have the downtown overlay zone and then the High Street overlay zone.
And we've really been, council has made, has made downtown one of its priorities with economic development. So that's why, you know, we've started to look at the downtown and do things there as far as, you know, wanting to try and find ways to get lighting and music and make it more event friendly. We know we have businesses that want to come in and do mixed use. They'd like to have apartments upstairs. But right now, our parking requirements make that very, very difficult because, you know, there there isn't that kind of parking available necessarily right at a building location. So that is one of the things that could be modified in this if we do want to encourage mixed use in the downtown area. So I, I'm pleased to see that being called out. And I also really like the fact that staff work with you to look at a larger area because the entry points to downtown do come sooner than before you cross the, you know, if you're coming off the highway and you go left on Second Street, your entryway is, comes up much sooner than before you get to East Front, you know, that impression of here you are. So I'm glad that you can do this larger overlay, but still focus on something very unique that the High Street area is. And we were kind of looking at the High Street area and East Front where every, there's diagonal parking down there. So that sort of differentiates and some of the, I think redevelopment work, the brick work that was done that there, the bulbouts. Kind of started and we have an opportunity to build upon it. The areas along Witson, there's a lot of availability, they get some infill opportunities, I think, things that would promote those types of infill opportunities would be valuable in an overlay zone there. But what do others think?
Well, I'm not, I'm not saying anymore, so I've had a chance to talk to people and see what they thought, so.
Well, I'm completely in favor of having a more vibrant downtown. That would be nothing but positive for the city itself. But this is what we need to do to do that. I don't know, but I kind of like the direction that it's going.
We've had a farmer's market off and on over the years and basically it failed to continue simply because enough people didn't come or we didn't get enough vendors to sign up for it. There's several, there's several reasons why things just don't work like everybody wants them to. And one of the reasons on High Street, especially with the farmer's market, some of the merchants did not want to stay open past five o'clock. So there's several things to think about. There's several things to talk about. We've got some ideas here to mull over. And I'm just not willing to point anybody in any direction, so I've had a chance to do a little research.
I, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
I'd say Eric, excuse my ignorance, who's Rincon and how, who asked you to do this thing?
So Rincon?
I'm a true guy. I'm totally ignorant, so enlighten me.
No, that's fine. Rincon is the company I work for, Rincon Consultants Incorporated. And so we're a planning and environmental firm, and then I manage the office here in Fresno. This contract specifically is with the Fresno Council of Governments. They did the, had a contract that we went after and won, which was provided us $100,000 to work with the 13 smaller cities within Fresno County to provide planning and engineering services, basically at, at the will of the cities. So in working through that contract from this year, this is the project we came up with for the City of Selma and working with your staff of focusing on the downtown area.
Gotcha. And then where does that funding come from for, is that coming also from COG?
Yes, so Fresno COG is paying for me to present this to you tonight and for developing this. Now there, so it was $100,000 and we had to, you know, try to divide it as equitably as we could amongst the 13 cities. Some cities didn't participate, others participated more. And so, but now with our work that we did, they, they went ahead and renewed that contract. So we have this same contract again, starting July 1st through June 30th of 2021.
So you're basically coming up with the plan and then it's up to the cities to fund and get the money to do, to implement it.
Right, yeah. So kind of like what this would be is we would write the, this zoning code for this specific area. So it would be, instead, it would be sort of, we call it an overlay zone. It's a process where you have your current zoning, but then you could also utilize this overlay zone. If it, you as a developer or an applicant, you know, this process would work better for you. So usually it's, you know, it's, it's ways to so anyway, what it does is that it allows for the development that you guys want to see in the downtown to help to for it to succeed and be able to, to develop.
So we're gonna, basically we, you come up with the plan and then we amend our city code to allow for the implementation of your plan?
Correct.
Okay, okay. And then it's up to us or the business owners to figure out a way to fund that and make that happen?
Yeah, so all this does is provide the, the framework within, you know, a new framework within which to build and then it's going to take the, the private sector to then come in.
Perfect. Okay, thank you very much.
That is definitely the private sector to build, but Eric, well, with your input, with the community's input through workshops, we'll come up with a revised set of codes based upon what the community wants to see. So your input, what, what you learn from businesses and residents that you talk to will be very valuable in these workshop processes. So that he can develop guidelines that represent what Selma envisions for this area. And then we can think of things that will help facilitate business. For example, in downtown, maybe we relax parking requirements or signage requirements. If along Witson, you're concerned about the size of signage or setbacks, or, you know, these are all different things that if you'd rather see parking on the side as opposed to the front, you know, just different things to think about for the overall development of those areas. And I'm sorry, Kira, you had a question or comment?
I, I had a question as well, please.
Go ahead.
After you.
I don't, I don't really have anything. I, I was just agreeing with what was being said. I, I guess I could, I could reference a couple occasions where I've had developers come to me with projects and they weren't able to move forward with their projects because of the code. So that's why, you know, it's important for Eric and I to work together because we can set up new standards that would allow those developments to move forward.
Could you name a few of those?
Yeah, so most of them revolve around housing downtown. So there's, I believe this is the building, I'm blanking on the applicant's name right now. He had, he's a real estate
Parmender.
Yes, so Parmender has a building here that he wants to revamp and he wanted to put some apartments on the third floor. But because the code as it stands requires parking for every single unit, there, and the building takes up the entire site, there was no place for parking. And that was also the case for, let's see, this would be outside of it. Okay, that's, this is the old school gym, right? That's outside of City Hall. Okay, so that's outside of, outside of the downtown area. That was another location. We also had, I want to say this might be it. Oh, you guys can't see my screen, sorry. I was circling the building. So
If you're talking about the trophy shop, if you're talking about the trophy shop, there's already a three bedroom apartment on the top of it.
Maybe he wanted to add more units.
How can you add more units to a three bedroom apartment?
He had a plan and I told him what his parking requirements were. And so he, at this point, his options would be, for example, to apply for a variance. Because, you know, you can't mean it, but the City of Fresno, the City of Madera, those places, they have downtown parking guidelines that are less than requirements elsewhere with the assumption that people can walk or use public transit or maybe share a car, you know, things like that. Because when you're in a downtown area, you expect to walk more. That's, I mean, that's the goal of the plan too. The other idea is for an in lieu of parking fee where you pay, the developer would pay for every parking spot that they don't have. And the city would use that money to create a public parking lot. So, I mean, most larger cities have that. You know, like you'll see parking garages and things like that. In Selma, maybe it would just be, you know, a parking, a public parking lot, not necessarily a garage to start at least, but collecting those fees over the years from each developer allows something like that to be developed. And we also had a restaurant, I think it's, it's on, it's on High Street. I think it's currently a dessert shop or was a dessert shop. It's closed. And they're right next door to a parking, a public parking lot. And they wanted to do outdoor dining in their parking area and we couldn't allow them because then they would be, you know, they would be short on parking stalls. And so that's just another example of someone who comes to us with something that would be great. An outdoor eating area is a really it's a big bonus to, to a downtown area. So it was disappointing that we couldn't facilitate that.
Thank you.
Ramza, did you want to say something?
Yes, thank you. So I run a business on High Street and my concern is definitely parking. I mean, especially when you're adding outside dining and pedestrian zones. The idea is great to bring more people to downtown, but it was a nightmare last year when they were doing farmer's market on the street. None of the neighboring business nor our office was able to operate in any normal condition due to that. Clients couldn't access our offices and unless, so my question is, are these boundaries set in stone, that yellow overlay zone? Or can they be basically maybe moved out a little bit more to allow for the city to acquire vacant parking? Vacant lots to turn them into parking and to make basically access to those businesses, one, when we're having some sort of events like these and bringing more, you know, events to downtown where it does not affect the existing businesses if they still want to be open for their regular business?
Oh yeah, the boundary is just what we've, we've come up with. We want your input on that. Wouldn't necessarily have to be within the boundary to have, you know, the, a new parking area within this area. You know, as far as the vacant lots to turn into parking, but, but we can always adjust the, the boundaries for sure.
And if businesses outside those boundaries felt like they could benefit from that basically relaxed zone in the downtown overlay area, can they request to be included? Or is it only specifically that's going to be within those boundaries? Because we are going to get the questions for people that are right outside. They're going to come and say, okay, so if you're on the other side of the street, you're okay doing all of that and I'm on this side of the street now, all of a sudden I cannot. So how relaxed are we going to be to the other business owners that would like to follow this model if it succeeded and it proved itself to be, you know, a good thing?
You can always expand on it. The, what you want to do is be able to kind of have some boundaries that create a, you know, you want to create a sense of place for the downtown and sort of concentrate, you know, these type of uses together. So you get too, too broad spread and then it doesn't work. And the example was Fulton Mall, when it went in, they went, you know, just too far. If they maybe stayed within one block, then the mall might have been a more, it might have been more successful. Instead of a failure. So those are the kind of things we need to take into consideration. You guys know your city best, so you're going to let me know where those boundaries should be. But we can start small and then as that works and we get, you know, core development going, then we can always expand it out. That's always an option.
Yeah, it's really important to establish that core and to create that energy in that place. So for example, the City of Fresno, they have actually three zones for their downtown because it's such a huge area. And if you truly want to make it a vibrant, walkable space, you really need to concentrate it. So in that center, like that's why this yellow versus green is a really good option here because the green can be your most central, highest density of use of walkability. And then as you move for, you move out, it gets a little less. But you wouldn't want the whole city to have these lax standards. You, you really want to, like synergy, you know, you want to concentrate it.
Okay, thank you.
And as well, you know, there, I don't know if it would necessarily be in this downtown overlay zone, but you can develop rules for doing those farmer's markets and other activities where it, it doesn't, would allow for you to stay open, you know, where you know, you'd have it on just one side of the street or have access for those businesses only, you know, so there could be other things to look at to make those successful for everybody.
Well, but the other issue honestly was also trash enclosures and restrooms. And I don't know if these would be considered in this plan because the next morning, walking downtown was a nightmare. Because even though the permit asked, the people who held the farmer's market required them to clean their trash. The reality is by 11 o'clock or 12 o'clock at night, they were so exhausted, they just picked up and left. And all the business owners had to clean up or kind of call, you know, waste management and call the city and complain. So I think if we allow also for maybe public restrooms and trash enclosures, it might help a little bit because at the end, those people that are there for public events, they need a place to use the restroom and they need a place to throw their trash. They're not going to take it with them.
Yeah, yeah, there's way, you know, maybe having a, a, a management company that, that manages the whole thing, comes in. So they're responsible for all that cleanup instead of the individual vendors. But like I said, I got, that's getting, you know, more into the weeds of of those activities where this is talking about the zoning that would allow for such, such those activities. But they're all good points. That's, that's, those are, it always comes down to the details to make things successful.
Okay, thank you.
One of the questions that came up in the, that I saw in the staff report had to do with the architectural potential guidelines and I think at one point it was just brought up that maybe we do something to reinforce Selma's identity. And is that something of, do we want to reinforce the heritage of the raisin capital of the world? Or is there something else? Sometimes communities look at the architecture that already exists to see if there's a theme to build upon. What are some of the things that we should think about when we look at, at that?
Okay. Anybody got anything else to add?
I was wondering, Eric, if there were some thoughts to things that we should be thinking about or the commission can as they are going to shape this and the I know you're going to want their input to shape the downtown zoning overlay. What kinds of things should we think about when it comes to architectural guidelines? Are they something that we want to develop or?
Downtown already has some beautiful buildings that are historic and are like from an architecture point of view, they look nice if they get cleaned up. So I think we definitely need to keep that and not get rid of it because in my opinion, you know, if we don't enforce keeping that historic area, it's like getting rid of, you know, our most like the oldest building, which have pretty much the history behind it and they're pretty. I think they just need to be cleaned up.
Yeah. And that's usually what makes these downtowns successful is that there's this unique architecture and in something there that isn't elsewhere. And so, yeah, we can, you know, so as there can be, you know, in the zoning code that it has to, you know, meet these design guidelines or, you know, have specific guidelines to match the existing architecture or the historic architecture there. And we can put in photographs and, you know, maybe drawings or something that that shows people when they're coming in that that's what they need to do.
But we also have to take into consideration the fact that sometimes these historical things can be a bit of a detriment to bringing businesses into downtown. For example, Kingsburg, who has every building has to be Swedish, including the auto parts store and the McDonald's and the gas stations. That causes people to have higher costs to bring businesses. And the fact that our our art center is truly not representative of the architecture in downtown, yet I think it it fits brilliantly because it represents change. So those are the things that we all have to take into consideration when we are thinking about redeveloping downtown.
Very true. I think one of the things is to, you know, we talked, there's one thing to, you know, you keeping the history of Selma and it's these nice historic buildings, but as well, are they truly historic as in they're on the national register, the state register? Because then you get into a whole nother lot of issues of development, the cost that you're you're talking about there. So you know, we can develop that. So you're right, that is, it can be that double-edged sword where you you can make it too too hard to develop because you have to meet all these standards versus, but you still want to have high-quality buildings that that fit in with that. And you can develop, put in options so that, you know, here's the standard by right use, you need to follow these guidelines. If you want to vary this some, then there's a directory view and approval where it would go to like, say, the city manager and then they can make a determination if that's good or not. And then as well comes to the planning commission as conditional use permit. So there's the different tiers involved there to allow for the different types of development and flexibility, but then with controls in that flexibility. It's a can be tight title, tight line, what to to walk here.
Thank you. Is that it?
I'm good. If you guys are good.
Okay. Oral communications notices to the public. At this time, any member of the public may address the commission regarding any item over which the commission has jurisdiction. No action or discussion will be taken on any item not on the agenda. Issues raised will be referred to the chairman for review. Members of the public shall limit their comments to three minutes. I will entertain a motion for adjournment. I'll entertain a motion for adjournment. Nobody wants to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I have a I have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye. Meeting is adjourned. Good night, folks.